Good evening, I'll call the meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the free and equal exercise of liberty, the Constitution of this country and to the Constitution of this country. A motion please to approve the agenda. Paul and Tina, have discussion. All in favor of approving the agenda? Motion is carried. Tonight, we have some presentations. And Mr. Paul, now turn the meeting over to you to introduce us.
Sure, thank you very much, Mrs. Collier. Excuse me. First, I'm going to start off by asking Ms. Riley Vassal to come on down and introduce herself to Board of Education. Riley is a junior with us, fantastic young lady. I think that you find that she's a very well-rounded student. I believe that her classes reflect that she pushes herself and amaxes her class mode. It's balanced between AP, Gemini, calculus, physics classes. And I do believe she keeps herself busy with some extracurriculars as well. But I'm going to turn it over to her and let her take it from there and kind of see what's happening at the high school from her point of view. Thank you, Riley.
Thanks for having me tonight. So, Mr. Paul has said I'm a junior at the high school. I plan to go to college for mechanical engineering and then be doing my masters in engineering management over at the law school. So, as I said, my course is full of Gemini classes, AP, and even taking a couple of classes online just to prepare me for college. In school, I participate in a lot of clubs, including Future Business Leaders of America, Interact Club, Student Council, varsity club, National Arts Society, ski club, and the musical. I was also class president for two years. Also, I'm a triathlete this year. I play soccer, indoor track, and outdoor track. In the past, I've also played basketball and golf. Keep myself busy, but in my free time, I still like to work out because we have an amazing facility with a lot of weights and a track, and I just love moving. Later this year, I'm looking forward to going to Spades for FBLA. Last year, we were really successful. A lot of my friends placed. I was lucky enough to place second and fifth in my two events, and I'm hoping to place again this year and hopefully qualify for nationals. I love FBLA. Me and my friends all do it, and it's really helpful for trying different career paths, and you learn a lot. You get a lot of skills, like interviewing skills and job and interaction with people. So, FBLA, I think, is a great experience, and I wish more students would do it, but I think it's really important that actual hands up. That's all I really have to say. Do you guys have any questions?
Would you rather be on the college picked out here or a couple of mine?
I have a list. I'm not really limited down yet. I play club soccer, so I'd really like to play soccer in college, so a lot of that depends on recruiting, so I'm not really sure yet.
Okay, great, and good luck during FBLA.
Thank you.
Well, Riley, thank you so much for being here tonight and telling us about your, all your activities and all that you're doing here. You're really a very positive person, obviously, and your parents must be extremely proud of you. We are, and we're glad that things are going well. Wish you well, that your finish this up and your senior year in college.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Riley. That was wonderful. Next, I'm going to introduce Mr. Hassel to have him come on up with the middle school's school leadership team. You're going to notice that there are a few people absent. It seems to be the seasonal bug and a little bit of remnants from the COVID virus are running through the middle school currently, but I think Mr. Hassel and the team that he asked about are phenomenal educators, so they're going to do a great job explaining where we are from midway through the middle school year.
Hi, good evening. Good evening. Yeah, so I've been telling people that the sickness has been going around the middle school two or three weeks now, and a lot of times you have those kids who tell you, "I threw up," but they're just saying that because they want to get out of class or they want to go home. But the kids are really throwing up now. It's crazy, and it's just all over the radio. You're hearing so-and-so cleanup, aisle two. It's been, it's been an adventure the past few weeks. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to provide an update for our school improvement plan. We have with us tonight our school leadership team, most of them. Tony Tubalino, our social studies teacher. Joe Ritchie, our special education teacher. Casey DeWiss Valer, instructional coach. There are three words that have been a focus and a foundation of our year: communication. Communication is a priority as we partner with families and community members to ensure success for all our students. Consistency. Consistency is at the forefront of our decisions, systems, and procedures. And commitment. We are committed to the growth and success of our students and staff at NRW Middle School. The first goal that we're primarily focusing on is partnership. This efforts are being made to ensure that communication within the NRW family is a top priority. What we're doing so far to meet these goals is the following. First off, our monthly district newsletter, consistent family communication. This includes direct communication with families for student needs, both academically and behaviorally, as well as any school-wide events. Staff and students' shout-outs and postcards. Family connections, including awards assemblies, parent-teacher conferences, community partner meet and greets, and a literacy night, the first of which we're planning on having for our upcoming parent-teacher conference on March 28. This is a new initiative that is being implemented to create reading opportunities alongside students and their families. Also, we are including our community partners, including Relying Federal Credit Meeting, Reading with Mr. Poole. This is a middle school book club that meets weekly, where he comes in and reads with our fifth-grade class. Rap theater, Trooper Collective with the Cypress community, time with our local veterans, a recent spelling bee, and our Rotary students. Recently, we've had our Rotary students meet with our Rotary club, get time to have some lunch together, and spend some time with some of our community leaders. Goal two is equity. This year, we provided teachers the opportunity to review their Tier One interventions and set individual goals within their classrooms. Students have also created individualized academic and behavioral and social-emotional goals in the fall and winter, and they will continue to monitor and reflect on their goals throughout the year. Whole-school teacher and student classroom management protocols and expectations have been established. This provides consistent expectations for student behavior throughout the school. For professional development, we've been strategic in offering asynchronous PD on topics such as bellwork and exit tickets, and have been purposeful in offering PD faculty meetings on positive behavioral interventions and creating an atmosphere that promotes restorative practices. At our quarterly town hall meetings, we revisit our expectations with all grade levels as we continue to build a positive, welcoming, and affirming environment. And our Cougar Care Room, CCR, has provided a means to address students' social-emotional needs and behavioral concerns. Any student who visits CCR is there because they are having a difficult time, and depending on their concern, they are triaged to the appropriate staff member. CCR continues to be foundational to the growth of our restorative way of thinking. Our third goal focuses on social-emotional needs. First off, advisory. Every morning, students meet in their advisory class, which focus on our Cougar pride traits. Staff hand out Cougar caps throughout the day to students who are following all these expectations. Students may use the cap at the Cougar store, which happens multiple times throughout the year. This has been a really big hit with a lot of our students. Pride classes are given to students who meet 85% or above threshold for attendance and academics, as well as following those Cougar pride expectations. We're also doing surprise incentives with students who meet different criteria throughout the month. For example, someone for surprise incentives included cookies and cocoa in the cafeteria, extra time in the gym, and ice cream sandwiches at lunch. At the Tier Three level, we have increased the number of our next-level intervention plans. Currently, we have 31 students with individual plans that are focused on the whole student, connecting home, school, and our community. Continuing for you Friday, as well as our monthly Reflect and Recover meetings, which are provided to have staff connect with each other to reflect our best practices, as well as gaining insight into our own standards and ways of being. Lastly, we have continued SCL support, such as ongoing lunch groups, work with our community partners, and create mediations between students and staff. We have also some staff leading their own mediations now, and as well as increased restorative conversations.
All right, goal four is our academic goal. To meet our academic goal, vertical teams are working to create Grade Five-Eve curriculum alignment apps to ensure standards are aligned across all content areas. ELA classes are focusing on academic stamina, and we have implemented a whole school writing strategy to teach students how to respond to written responses in a consistent way in all content areas. Progress monitoring is occurring in our WIN, or What I Need, and SIPs groups to ensure student needs are being met appropriately. We are continuing to refine our MTSS process with consistent data analysis using the BASE model. This is taking a look at the behavioral, academic, attendance, and social-emotional needs of our students. Lastly, we have implemented a digital literacy skills class for our seventh-grade students, which is a place of BACS, and we have completed a course proposal for a computer science class for sixth-grade students next year. So, this slide here is showing our Quarter One and Two passing rates for Grades Five, Six, Seven, and Eight. This includes all content areas. As you can see, we have well over 75% of our students passing their classes across all grade levels. The next two slides that you will see show our Quarter One and Quarter Two passing rates for math and ELA. For math, we did see a slight decrease in our passing rates from Quarter One to Quarter Two for Grades Five, Six, and Seven. However, we have increased our passing rate to 75% for Grade Eight in math. And in ELA, our passing rates for the Quarter Two have increased slightly with the monoduro happening in our Grade Seven ELA class.
Goal five is finance. The budget process is refined for efficiency and responsible use of resource. We've done this through, the purchase recognition form has been updated to include a rationale to ensure responsible planning and purchasing. Communication will flow from grade-level leadership to building leaders. Grade levels meet, along with the instructional coach, to determine which resources are needed to support learning, and then are communicated to building administration. And lastly, curriculum resources were recently reviewed via staff survey to verify which resources the line of record on, as well as determine which ones are no longer needed.
That's our presentation. Thank you. If you have any questions.
Comments or questions? Paul?
Could you elaborate on the Rotary students?
The Rotary students?
Yes.
Yeah, there's a student of the month that's, um...
Oh, okay.
It's, yes, student of the month. And that student is selected by our grade-level leaders.
I'm, I'm going with that.
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you very much. It was nice to see, see you working toward these goals, and it was nice to see the improvements here in the first and second quarters. Really wonderful in the seventh grade, um, ELA.
We're very proud.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving right along, I'm going to ask Mr. Bartle to come on up and give the Board of Education and our community an update on the budget process and where we stand as of today. Thank you, middle school's school leadership team. Great.
Yeah, thank you, guys, especially for that finance piece. I'll always appreciate that. So anyhow, um, tonight, we get our first look at the entire tentative budget. It's really shaped up nicely. We consider this the district's financial plan, and I've heard others in the past refer to this budget as the financial interpretation of the district's instructional plan. So, we feel good about where we are at this point in time. We're able to show you a tentative budget in its entirety. We'll be getting to more and more detail as the next board reading, with the next piece of the presentation, and then in our budget workshop, and then a final presentation for our voters. But we do feel good about this, and because we feel like we are meeting our budget goals both fiscally and educationally, and secondly, minimizing the impact to our taxpayers. So, this is a snapshot of the entire budget, a balanced budget. So, it's critical that we do present a balanced budget. We don't borrow money from the federal government, so just point that out. When we put a budget together, it's the appropriation side of the budget. That budget, those numbers on the right side, that's what the voters are approving. They don't really approve the revenue side, but we have to make sure that the appropriations are properly supported by our revenues. In fact, the revenues really dictate how much growth we have from year to year in, in, in our appropriations budget. So, we have two major revenue sources, which you all know, that's state aid and property taxes. State aid represents roughly two-thirds of our budget funding, and property taxes is almost one-third, with the rest of those revenue items making up the difference. But we're really heavily dependent on our state aid, and we're limited in our taxing of authority, right, by the tax cap. So, what you see here is a 3.6% increase budget to budget, and as we've talked, as we've worked through this budget process, it's been a challenge, right? We've heard about the rate of inflation. So, the CPI over the last 12 months have been over 8%. We're coming in with a budget under 4%, so we do feel good about that. Here's just a general look at our estimated revenues for '23, '24. Gives a little picture to see how this is divided up. Sometimes, looking at that visually helps more than just looking at a bunch of numbers. I will have to apologize because I have seven revenue categories, but only six slices of pie up there. Somehow or another, the revenue piece of pie is missing out. Correct that before we post it onto our website, but at least it's there on the left-hand side. The reserves are at $620,000. But it doesn't really change too much as far as visually looking at that diagram. Now, we'll, we'll go right to the next slide. This is still the revenues, but now comparative look. So, how this revenue budget stacks up to, to the current budget. So, state aid, our overall estimate is increasing state aid revenues by a pretty healthy 4.3%. Property taxes, levy to levy, we're at 2.9%. We are below the tax cap. Remember, the tax cap isn't tax rate, it's tax levy, levy to levy. So, we are within that. March 1st, I have to submit to the state comptroller's office the tax cap calculation, so that's all set. And we're now estimating our tax rate to be at just about the 2% level. Greenhouse got a rate of 2.1 and a conservative estimate there. Okay. All the other revenues, miscellaneous revenues, there's a slight increase there, and that's, that usually doesn't change too much, but I did increase it this year based on increased interest revenues. So, we're earning a lot more money this year than we expect to next year than we had budgeted for. So, that's a good thing. When I talk about debt service later on, it's not such a good thing when we go out to borrow again, we'll have higher interest expense. But anyhow, at this point, it helps support our budget. And this budget also shows a little bit less reliance on fund balance and reserves. So, that's kind of an important thing to note. Last year, we increased our use of reserves and fund balance to help balance our budget, so we didn't go after some other reductions. We relied a little bit more on fund balance last, or I should say, the current year, and our use of reserves to help balance the budget. So, I'm just bringing that down a bit. We're fortunate to be able to do that. So, here's that 3.6 budget increase in general. There's an I chart. As we work on finalizing all areas of budget, we expect to maintain this, this overall budget increase will be very close to that 3.6%. That kind of dictates where we are with our tax cap and tax rates. The budget is broadly divided into these seven major categories. I'll say the instructional budget and the benefits comprise about 72% of the budget. And here's a comparative look at the budget this year to next year's estimate. The largest increase, dollar increase anyhow, is instruction, but the largest increase is in general support and transportation, and those are two of the areas that we're going to be focusing on tonight. So, these highlighted areas in green are what we're going to focus on tonight. Just draw some highlights in each of these areas for you. The other areas, instructional budget, community services, and the benefits budget, I'll be presenting at our next meeting in two weeks. Just wanted to mention that I'll be presenting those other areas, and then our next look at the budget, we're going to do it together in a budget workshop. We will dive even deeper as we did last year. So, this plan really follows, or these presentations really follow what we did last year. So, I welcome any input that the board has on what they'd like to see, especially as we get to our workshop. And then that following week, we'll be presenting the final plan for you, for the, for you to vote on. And then May 4th, will be the final look at the budget, and that's, that's our public hearing. Okay? So, here is a look at the general support budget. So, although the general support budget is divided into like seven major categories that we just looked at, the general support budget is broken up into, there are six subgroups there. So, the overall budget to budget in general support increase is just over 6%. I had this slide last year if you were in again with an updated I chart to show in the general support area of the budget, really how it's divided. You can see that the central services area, that's our maintenance, that's our plant operations and maintenance of plant. And that's basically 60% of the general support budget. I just want to point out that in each of these functional areas of the, of the budget or categories, we have our salaries in there, there's equipment items in there, supply contractual items, and there's generally, BOSI services lines in each of these categories of the budget. So, BOSI service lines, there, there's several of them. There's usually one line item in the budget with each of these functions. Some of the general support budget highlights include, as we have in most all areas of budget, salary increases, those are contractual obligations. So, we also have highlighted certain increases, including BOSI services, and some of those services relate to our sexual business office. They are struggling right now, anticipating some retirements in that department at the end of next year. And they're worried about it, and they're worried about filling some of the, some of the staff in that office for, you know, the, as we do, the treasurer positions and payroll benefit positions. So, we've been warned that those, those services are going to go up, you know, 15, 20% next year. So, we're anticipating some of that, some increased cost of product purchasing. And the services that we receive, and it's a great, great deal, really, some of the services for electrical and HVAC staff that, that we're able to tap into for BOSI support. And we're going to be using those for, those services next year. We plan on doing some LED lighting upgrades and more changing out on our exterior lighting. So, the other thing I want to point out here is our continued commitment to our facilities improvement and maintenance program. So, we have money in this budget to handle increases in our maintenance supply items. One of our major suppliers has warned us that, that they've delayed a lot of orders, and the cost has gone up. And we, I know we talked about this last year, you know, you go to Lowe's or Home Depot, and, and we see what construction costs, and all these materials are, have gone up. So, we're anticipating a 10 to 15% increase in those, those costs. We're also building our supply inventory to handle more in-house repair work. And I think when we do the building tour and the maintenance department, some of your, some of the plans for, for that. We're planning to replace some of our aging equipment, including our mowers. We want to add one more zero-turn mower. That's the plan. We'll have three to replace one every three years. And the services that we receive, and it's a great deal, really, some of the services for electrical and HVAC staff that we're able to tap into for BOSI support. And we're going to be using those for those services next year. We plan on doing some LED lighting upgrades and more changing out on our exterior lighting. So the other thing I want to point out here is our continued commitment to our facilities improvement and maintenance program. So we have money in this budget to handle increases in our maintenance supply items. One of our major suppliers has warned us that they delayed a lot of orders and the cost has gone up. And I know we talked about this last year, you know, you go to Lowe's or Home Depot and we see what construction costs and all these materials have gone up. So we're anticipating a 10 to 15% increase in those costs. We're also building our supply inventory to handle more in-house repair work. And I think when we did the building tour in the maintenance department, some of your, some of the plans for that. We're planning to replace some of our aging equipment, including our mowers. We want to add one more zero turn mower, that's the plan. We'll have three to replace one every three years. And those mowers would have a nine-year lifecycle. We need to replace our, one of our pickups that's aging and replace two older minivans. And we're looking to replace two of those with one more vehicle for multipurpose, including our car. Looking for more utilization of our big tractor, which we're getting a lot of use out of now, but we could add more attachments to that for a front end snowboarder and a backhoe attachment. So some of these things that we're finding that we, you know, with our staff, we can do more for ourselves than hire out. So in the long run, we're hoping that we're saving money. So on the transportation budget, that's going up a fair amount, 17, over 17%. The highlights, again, contractual salary, that doesn't increase that. But I can tell you, 11, just over 11% of that 17% increase is going to increase fuel costs. So you take that increase out, and you know, we've got a pretty normal increase in that transportation budget. So that's significant, but we need to be ready. We fell short last year. We're running pretty tight this year. We want to be prepared for those fluctuations in fuel prices. And this should do it. We also have an increase in our equipment line in transportation. Hoping to plan on buying a new smaller vehicle such as a server. We discussed a couple different varieties of vehicles, so I'd probably bid that out. But there's money in there for that and also for the garage for tire changer and balance. Here's a look at our debt service budget. Debt services to help pay for the principal and interest costs as we borrow money to finance our capital projects. This isn't changing much. You will see a change next year as some of our bond payments drop off. And before we actually get into our new project funding. So right now, we're planning on doing a short-term borrowing for our new capital project, the $1 million project. We'll do a bond anticipation note in July. The amount of that, just been working with our fiscal advisors on that. We'll be borrowing the balance. Remember, our project is financed with about $3 million in reserves and $8 million from borrowing. So we're going to plan on doing the full shot of the $8 million in July for our short-term, one-year note. Then we go to the permanent financing after that with bonds. But because of the increase in interest costs, I've been warned. I had originally, we were anticipating about $125,000 for the '24, '25 budget. That's probably going to double. But it's something that as we structure the debt payments, we should be able to get by. And our last category here, in a transfer budget, those are three line items. We traditionally have a transfer to help supplement the food service operations. What I'm happy to say, read this here, that should have done a great job. We've ended up the last couple of years, or several years, with a surplus in that fund. And in fact, we have a little bit too much right now, and we're going to have spending down that plan. So the general guidelines or regulations for school lunch operations, they have three months of fund balance, three months of your operating cost in your fund balance. We exceeded that, we've noted in our management letter, we reviewed it with the operating with the board. So we do have a plan to bring that down. In light of high fund balance, we really don't need to supplement the lunch fund operations. So I've eliminated the $30,000 transfer for next year. The transfer to the special aid fund, that's to help support the local cost of our summer school handicap program. And that's anticipated. That does vary a little bit, so I'm working with our CBO, Trevor Marks, and all of them suggesting that we do add a little bit more in there. So I think the $77,000 amount should cover. Generally, we get aided up to 80% of our cost in that program. But we don't always get to full 80%. It's not all payable, so they say it's more like 30%. I agree with them, so we have that to cover. And then we, once again, budgeting $200,000 for our capital overlay project for the seventh base of our high school library improvement. And I know when we get to our budget workshop, we'll be talking about some of these things more and the capital overlay. And I've been showing you in the past presentations what's on the ballot. I'll talk about that just a little bit more briefly. So the proposition one, we have a more defined number. We're right about that $34 million, $34.7 million number. That's, as we finalize this budget, we're still working on the instructional area of the budget. We're just about there, we'll be ready in two weeks to give you that. But the exact number is going to change just a little bit. But we're going to keep it roughly the same as I set up for. The second proposition is for the buses. This is very similar to what we've done in the past, or at least last year. Last year, we purchased five buses and traded in six. We're reducing the size of our fleet a little bit, we're able to do that. This year, we're planning on purchasing five more buses. One of them will be a handicap bus and trading in seven. We almost, this still works out okay, whatever type. The bus cost has gone up almost 30% over the prior year. So our average bus prices last year was $142,000. The average for this year is $183,000. So that's a 29% increase. So we still get aided on those buses. So we're sticking to our plan of replacing our buses over a five-year cycle. So that's a good thing. Not good that the cost has gone up so much, but I think we're going to see over the future, we'll have a lot more discussions where buses are going. You know, there continues to be more talk about eventually going to, you know, electric, but we know we can't fully do that. So proposition three is for the libraries. We can talk about that probably more in our budget workshop. But I will say, just talk about proposition four. This doesn't happen every year. Last year, we had to renew our capital reserve. This is a type of capital reserve, this is the bus purchase reserve, just like last year. It didn't reach its full term, but it was fully funded. So we have to establish a new reserve to keep utilizing this. They have typically, all bus purchase reserves have a five-year lifecycle. In our capital reserves, we usually have a 10-year lifecycle. So this time, we've increased the amount to $6 million. And we hope, hopefully, that will be sufficient over the life of the reserve. And we have our budget timeline with the committee. We'll just add a few things because a lot of things do happen, this and ours all point here on this timeline. But right after the board adopts the budget, planning on April 13th meeting, these are all kind of mandated timelines, due dates, in order for us to present the budget to the voters. But we'll be right up the day after, within 24 hours of the budget adoption, April 13th, we have to submit our real property tax report card. And we'll be preparing, not the day after, but through the remaining month of April into May, our public budget documents, which I think you were seeing for the first time last year, correct? We'll continue to do that. I just listed some of the budget documents that we have to present to the public. And those are presented in each of our buildings, they're presented in our local libraries as well, and also on our website, so they're available for the public. Then we'll have our budget hearing and the vote. And that concludes the presentation. Do you have any questions?
Linda?
Yes.
And now a question, a couple of comments from our associate mentor who presented to us. I'm worried that our use of reserves has gone down almost 4%. And the transfer, so had gone down by 5%. And I thought about how we struggled with our personal lunches. And I'm thinking that's great that you were able in your budget for this year to be able to do that. Just my way of commenting. And that the increase is really equal to the amount of increase that money at funding. So it really seems like a wash in terms of major increase in logic because it takes no account of the beginning. Thank you, Gary.
You're welcome, thank you.
Anyone else? Gary, I would just like to say, I truthfully don't know how you kept it as tight as you did. You're working on your budget, you know, the cost of everything has just skyrocketed. And we're all, as consumers, aware of that. So I think you've done a great job.
Yeah, one thing I didn't bring up, which I usually always do, is like our major cost drivers. That's always such a big concern, right? So last year, I'll just say that we were fortunate, really, this year to land where we did. I was pretty concerned, really, particularly because of health insurance and retirement costs. So our health insurance rates were much less than we anticipated, than what we were told, right? So as they look at our claims and the plant's fund balance, it did come down. I think they were surprised also, our consultants. They negotiated that with Excel also, so we were fortunate there. The teachers' retirement rate, which we'll be talking about in two weeks, although that line is increasing, I think it's increasing about 1%, but the rate actually came down just a little bit. And I've got a slightly increase in there because salaries are going up and it's based on salaries that are subject to the retirement system.
Well, even though those things were wonderful, that they did come down, I think the budget is tight because of good planning on your part, and I appreciate that.
It's a team effort.
I also wanted to say that if people have just heard this for the first time, just because the school budget might go up 3.6% does not mean that your personal taxes on your house is going to go up 3.6%. That's the whole process in between. And I know that Tom Rose just finished a rebuild, and I know that team. However, when the pot gets bigger, the rates go down. So people often say, oh, the school budget goes up a certain amount, now my taxes are going to go up that much. That is not true.
Right, we'll keep driving that point home, I think, quite a bit more when we do the final budget and definitely in the budget hearing and our public budget documents. Like we did last year, we'll show the estimated tax rate of that. Try to be conservative when we try to keep it at 2% or lower, you know, if we have. And so that'll be in the newsletter as well.
Thank you. Good job.
Thank you, Gary. So hopefully, the board and the community see that, you know, over the last three years, we've really tried to take advantage of efficiencies in the budget areas. Just presented to you the overview. I think you're starting to realize we're really trying to look at that return on investment. So when our fleet shrinks in terms of our buses, and we're capitalizing on trade-in value for those buses, that we are being more intentional with what we're purchasing. And we have a vision and a very clear plan as to what we're going to replace the equipment with so that we're stretching taxpayer dollars. So, you know, we're really maximizing on the benefit of our community's support and capitalizing on that. Couple of quick areas, just a highlight for you. So you'll recall that last summer, early fall, we had an issue with our fuel tank that was 30 years old, sprung a leak. In true form, the supply chain interruptions, you know, we just finished up with our new fuel tank at the transportation department. And we're very lucky that those taxpayer dollars went back into a local entity. So we were very pleased to work with the Valley Brothers Construction and put in our new fuel tank. There it is on your screen. And that is something we are planning, again, for the future, that this is something that we could go ahead and pick up and move if we need to. So this isn't one of those fixed mounted structures like you've seen in the past. This is something that we intentionally plan, that if we redo the transportation department, that this can be moved and relocated. We're very confident in that. But it was a painstaking process to obviously work through the loss of fuel in the fall to deal with the 30-year-old tank and come up with an effective replacement plan. But due to due diligence, Mr. Stock and Mr. Barnes were right on top of that. So we're really pleased with that outcome. So I just wanted to share that with the board and the community, in case you haven't heard of the Downhill Lady. Additionally, you've heard these names a lot lately, Vivian Bishop, A.J. Anthony, Noah Wazinski, and then a newcomer to the crowd is Jag Defail. So the four student athletes there, they're in front of you all on individual sectional championships. And three out of those four went on to compete at the state tournament in their respective sports. So again, our commitment to our student athletes and our commitment to our students' extracurricular programs, we're doing very well. And we're going back to restoring North World's Wilkins to the prominence that you were accustomed to years ago. Just want to highlight those students and congratulate them on a fantastic winter season. Next week, spring sports start on Monday. So we're hoping that we have just as much success, both from an individual standpoint as well as a team standpoint. Academically, we're also doing some wonderful things. And here's one of our seniors, Erin Youngman. She was North World's Wilkins recipient of Superintendent's Award through the Wayne Figueroa Superintendent's Group. And with her in that picture is Dr. Robert Nye, who's the president of FLCC. And as recipient of this award, Erin received a $1,000 scholarship to FLCC, should she enroll in there. The award was well-rounded, it talked a lot about character education, talked about her character, her commitment to our community through community service, academics, and just being a general well-rounded person. So we were pretty pleased to support her last week, and it was a great event. So all 25 component districts had a representative there, and I would say none was outshining Ms. Youngman. She's a fantastic young lady. Lastly, I just want to go through a couple of quick things. Typically, our board meetings are out here in the middle school auditorium. But in true form, we're back with the middle school musical this year. I think you all have a flyer for handing in front of you. So our middle school musical department's been working extremely hard over the last several weeks on preparing for that. So that weekend, the 24th, I believe, at 6 o'clock. and I think that Annie's going to be a fantastic show. And one last piece that's not on the agenda, you know, we've been working really hard on our safety planning and our commitment to keeping our student staff and community members safe when they're in the building. So recently, we've been executing some drills after school and preparing this for an event that could take place after hours, because typically, you know, most people think about safety planning when students are in session. Well, in this day and age, when schools are the center of the community, it's important to have those drills executed after the students en masse vacate, because we do have practices, we do have musical performances, we do have club activities. So that's been going on recently. There's an opportunity for us to learn and grow in one subject. We have inadvertent code dial from one building to the next, and that's something that the students will be addressing out to the community in an individual letter from each of the building principals going out in our newsletter, Perrin Square, next week. Very pleased with the fact that we're taking that on, because I will tell you, from sitting around the table with a regional group of my colleagues, most people haven't considered that, but we're really pushing for our students and our staff to be prepared in all instances. And I think they're going to see that Mr. Blankenberg will start to add that safety component and to meet the coaches' information so that people understand, if you're in a gym, what do you do? If you're on a baseball field, what do you do? You know, God forbid that an incident like that happened here or anywhere in close proximity, but it is something that we're going to work on, and it is a piece for us where we take that communication issue from a recent mistake. We will debrief that with our safety committee at large. We'll talk about that again with the community. We'll put out what we're doing, why we're doing, and we will apologize for the breakdown in communication, because we did break a protocol that was typically followed. But I do believe in our best efforts to get our students, staff, and community members to think and respond in those incidents. It's a mistake to think we didn't cause anybody anything, but we will learn from it, and we'll continue to grow. So I'm happy to take any questions from the board regarding what's happening here from my vantage point or anything related to the safety piece. And I do anticipate April, our board member representative will give us an update on where we're at with safety and security. Thoughts? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. At this time, we'll move to reports, and of course, findings. Our building, please. Linda, you may be in Pennsylvania, but I do know you have a report from the elementary school.
I do. I want to thank Christie for giving me the information, because we were able to meet in person since I'm off state. She did report about the Universal Pretty Kenny kindergarten parent information night that was on March seventh, and that all of the students at North Rose Elementary have developed their future story displays throughout the building. And after they've completed them, they're in the hallways for everyone to see and review, and they have put in those what they see at this point as their future plans. And I couldn't help but reflect on how they've changed to their own children from elementary school to elementary, but it's interesting that they're beginning that at this early age. The staff is also looking forward to appearances coming up in the next few weeks. And she did want to give a huge shout out to this is one of those special classes because they have their first annual spelling meeting, and we made it to the final round, so they were happy about that, and they're going to make it an annual tradition. One whole station that I noticed that she has in one of her emails, I want to mention, it says, "Intelligence plus character, that is the goal of true education," a quote of Watkins and Kane Junior. That's my report.
Thank you. Paul, did you have something from the middle school?
Well, I want to take it from what the middle school president was, and that's that the spelling meeting was a really successful. The elementary school and the middle school combined, and that spelling made nothing but kudos from the community and from what I've been able to ascertain some thinking.
And Tina, do you have a report from the middle school? Has provided some great information. The recovered club has been active. They went on a field trip where they first did an inventory, figured out what was needed in order to stop the cover, and then went shopping. Made a shopping list, did the full inventory themselves, the whole process. It sounds like a great, just a great opportunity for the kids to learn. They had supplied them on the back end program, so everything was set, so we're in good shape there. And they scanned the brochures, they did the whole thing, so I really wish I could have done all of that. While they were out, they also visited Powderwell Park in Monroe County, so they got to see the active fish hatchery there, saw rain going around the park, so that was something that they seemed to really enjoy. We had thirty-seven students go to auditorium theater to see Beetlejuice, which I saw that show, it was a good show. It sounds like they really enjoyed that. Top ten students from the senior class have been announced. They were recognized along with their families for a breakfast at the high school, so we're in good shape there. Then some upcoming events, March twenty-first, there's a district concert, and now that the auditorium is not under construction, it will be held at the high school, where all three buildings will be working together. So we'll have a nice joint opportunity there. Then on March twenty-eighth, the district is hosting the college and career night, which will be run simultaneously with parent conferences, so it will be a good opportunity for parents to be there, make use of that time. The focus of the college serves in the application process, career decisions, union memberships, community college with the two plus two program, and transfer opportunities, and military recruitment. So it sounds like they've really done a great job planning to pull together everything while they're there. And then Dollars or Hours Homeathon will be held March fourteenth to fifteenth. Get ready. What's going on? High school's a busy place.
Yes.
Linda, do you have anything to report on Paul's family?
Well, we do know there is a spring conference coming up at the end of this month. And we do know one of the very important presenters that day, superintendent, is there will be, those of us that did attend the presentation earlier in the year, don't think that this is going to be a happening topic, with certain music's banned and it won't have another time to attend. We would need to register through district. So if you would like to go on, it's the twenty-fifth, correct? Or the twenty-fourth?
Twenty-fourth.
The twenty-fourth, I can point this over there. It is the twenty-fourth, which is a day after our activity. It's going to be having safety issues, which are very important, and there'll be some folks that have some very serious experience with safety issues that have been presenting, and there'll be breakout sessions, from what I understand, in the afternoon to follow through the morning sessions. I do, I do want to say that Legislative Committee, that I survived this meeting again, this area, wanting to begin some things that we need to follow up on, our federal proposals, and I'm sure that there won't be long, we'll start thinking about this year. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Handover Committee has not met. Audit Committee, John, is there anything?
No.
Buildings and grounds, Jason, anything from you?
We met in February and reviewed the facilities conditions report. We discussed long and short term projects. We discussed investigating relevant and efficient projects and how to maximize aid.
Anything with capital, you mentioned capital energy, anything after those?
I don't know.
How about the district's safety? Anything on that?
Nothing in February or maybe March twenty-ninth, and as Mr. Paul said, that we'll be reviewing that in April.
All right. And the alternative learning center?
Nothing tonight.
Okay. Paul, anything on policy?
Yes, the four policies are up for the first read. The first one is probation and tenure. It's not a required policy, but we thought it was a very important one for staff to know what the expectations were here at District. And so we thought it was really good to have it upline, and both of you did some nice work on it, and of course, those officers, I mean, staff, they're very satisfied with the revision. The next one is temporary personnel, again, not a required policy, but one we thought the district should have, so that everyone understands what the procedures are for hiring temporary. The next one is the use of email in the district, and interestingly, this isn't a required policy by the state. I think it's just that the state's behind reality. This is a significant rewrite, so you can file through it. Both of you did a nice job writing, and our staff was pleased with it. And a couple of pages at the bottom says to customize it later in the district, but we were happy with the way it was, and so was our superintendent, so we're just going to read that. That little yellow will be deleted, of course, for the final copy. And then leaves of absence, really approved format, added a little bit. We thought it was a good policy, but we thought the policy is revised from script. Of course, any questions, as always, you can call.
Okay, thank you so much. Public access, Tina, is there anyone requesting to talk to us tonight?
No, there's no one.
Thank you. We've come to the consent agenda, motion please to approve the consent agenda. Tina and John, discussion. Just go through page six of your agenda. And I know you all had a chance to study there prior to the meeting, so you all know what it is, and some of you already had your questions clarified, which is great. Anything else? Then all in favor of approving tonight's consent agenda? Motion is carried. Return, please, to page six, seven. Six. Page six, number six, policies. These policies were presented last month for a first read, and tonight they're being presented for a second read and therefore adoption. Motion, please, to approve the policies for the second read. Now, Paul and Tina, discussion. All in favor of approving the policies? Motion is carried. Number seven, the award bid for general trades contract. Motion to approve, please. Tina, Jason, discussion. All in favor? Motion is carried. Number seven, the award bid for general trades contract. Motion to approve, please. Tina, Jason, discussion. All in favor? Motion is carried.
Cindy, that was for all of the bits.
Page number eight, we've come to roll, call votes. Eight, A. A motion, please, to approve for language approval of the May sixteen, twenty twenty-three budget vote. Motion? Jason, John, discussion. Hearing none. Tina, would you call a roll?
Cindy?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Shelley is absent.
Excuse me.
Linda?
Yes.
Tina?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion is carried.
Eight, B. A motion, please, to approve the notice of public hearing and annual school district John and Tina, discussion. Tina, would you please call a roll?
Cindy?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Shelley is absent. Linda?
Yes.
Tina?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion is carried.
Motion is carried. Going on over to page eleven, we are at page C at the bottom of the page. A motion, please, to approve the resolution to authorize the unsealing and opening of the ballot box. Motion? Paul and John, discussion. Hearing none. Tina, would you call a roll?
Cindy?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Shelley is absent. Linda?
Yes.
Tina?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion is carried.
Motion carried. Turning now to page twelve, number nine. A motion, please, to approve the installation of the H V A C mechanical unit at the elementary school. Motion? Jason, Tina, discussion. Roll, please call a roll, Tina?
Cindy?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Shelley is absent. Linda?
Yes.
Tina?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion is carried.
Motion is carried. Turning to page thirteen, number ten. A motion, please, to approve the coaching and athletic department appointment. John and Jason, discussion. Tina, would you please call a roll?
Cindy?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Shelley is absent. Linda?
Yes.
Tina?
Yes.
Paul?
Motion.
Thank you. Motion is carried.
Motion is carried. We move now to board member requests, comments, and discussions. Does anyone have anything they want to report for? All right, I have a few things here, just a reminder. We talked about Annie coming in hot on March twenty-four and twenty-five. Linda mentioned the Ford County World School Spring Conference on Friday, March twenty-fourth. If you would like to attend that, it's really a whole day affair, please let Tina know, and she will register us. And the other reminder is that on April sixth, for your planning purposes, is our budget workshop that Gary mentioned, which starts at four o'clock, and then we'll be at the school. Moving on to good news. Anyone have anything they want to add? You liaisons all had good news to start with, so anything anyone wants to add? John?
I have a clipping from one of our local newspapers. I have a clipping from one of our local newspapers that the Wilka Forever Youth Young Seniors Group had a presentation by the North Rose Wilkens High School Choir. It's a very nice picture of the choir presenting there. Great to get them out in the public.
It's nice to be able to do that. Nice for them and nice for the public. All right. Chris, Paul?
Yeah, and to add to John's, as I got feedback from community members, that was really just a great success. So I already mentioned the spelling bee, nice article in Lake Shore News, nice article also on our new vice principal, Mrs. Sally, for the high school. Like I already mentioned, Vivian, and of course, A.J. and Noah. But I also want to just remind us, and this has been brought up before by our superintendent, but we had a female wrestling, I think this was, was this a county championship? It's a Boses, it was a Wayne Finger Lakes wrestling, so our wrestling program. And remember, the whole team, men's team, won the league, so wrestling, just doing awesome for our school. Now, one of my favorite parts is the Dean's List. So at North Rose Wilkens, a resident is named at Hofstra University, Dambly Waring. And at RIT, his name's old. It'll sound very familiar to those of us that attended the graduation, which is Zachary Daruque is on the Dean's List at RIT along with Lucy Zan. Clarkson came through, finally, with Dean's List, Mike Spasky was on. And then for the Presidential Scholars, a scholar, Stu, who is majoring in chemical engineering. Nazar, another outstanding North Rose Wilkens graduate, Drew Fowler, is on the Dean's List at Nazar. So all good. I love to announce those. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Always good when we hear that our graduates are doing well. That completes our agenda for tonight. A motion, please, to adjourn. Tina and Jason, discussion. All in favor? Motion is approved. We are adjourned. Thank you for coming.